As soon as I get the, okay, all right. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are being audio and video recorded this evening. This is a continuation of the public hearing for 84 Cleveland Street, Town House, Community, Lakeland Farms. This evening, we have several items to review. And I think, let me consult with Judy first. We just got, or we just received the peer review comments about 15 minutes ago, the response from Andrews. And so we haven't had, Bill hasn't had a chance to really study these and go over them. So I think what we'd like to do is give Bill an opportunity to compare these to the site plan and perhaps at a December 13 meeting, have him comment on there. Does that make sense to you?
I would think so. I mean, he needs a chance to review it.
He hasn't even had a chance. We just literally got these about 10 minutes ago.
They were mailed last Thursday. We received them on Thursday and they were not forwarded to Beta until--
They sent them a week ago, Mr. Chairman.
They did? Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't receive them until this evening.
No, I understand. I understand the situation that you're in. I can also understand the applicants.
Okay, now why did we get them so late?
Um, courteous annoyance at the moment.
Because they were filed in my conservation boardroom.
I think there's, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you very much. I was apprised of that and, you know, we certainly understand that that's, that happened. But in looking at the letter, in fact, I would ask if the board would entertain doing so now. It would seem that it's fairly complete. In fact, the majority of the comments indicate that there's no response required. So if you're willing to do that, to go through the letter and decide for yourself, I guess the ultimate question, which is whether or not, based on this letter, there remains a need to keep the public hearing open, then, you know, we're happy to discuss it. On the other hand, if you're of the view that the comments are, and if your consultants of the view that the comments are such that there's little to review, then I don't know if it does make sense to close the public hearing. So what I'm asking is, you know, are you willing to quickly go through the letter now?
I don't see any harm in that because I think your consultant will say, you know, either I'm okay with this or I need more time.
All right. Bill, do you want to--
Are you comfortable with that?
Do you want to go through it tonight or do you want to, do you need time to review this and go through it next week?
No. I think we can go through the letter and, like Judy said, if there's something in here, I think the two things I see that we haven't had a chance to look at are the landscape plans and the lighting plans.
Okay.
Glancing quickly at them, one of our comments on the landscape plans was regarding snow storage areas conflicting with proposed landscaping. Looking at them quickly, it looks like that's been resolved. Similarly with the lighting plans, they have shown a lighting plan that shows photometrics on it, which at first glance showed that there's no light spillage off of the property, that they are using cutoff fixtures.
Okay.
But I'm happy to go through the letter.
Okay. On the snow storage, did you see the comments from the Conservation Committee?
I just got those today as well.
Because they had some very specific comments on snow storage.
We haven't seen those comments, Mr. Chairman, but we did attend the Conservation Commission. I believe the comments, if, maybe inform me if I'm correct, do with signs or barriers and stuff, is that--
Right, exactly. Yep, yep, exactly.
They closed it probably.
All right.
Do we proceed to go through this first?
What's that?
Should we go through this?
Yeah, we're gonna go, yeah, Bill, so let's go through this letter and if, Amy, if you can print out the Concom comments for Ted and his team, that would, so they can see those comments, that would be good. All right, so let's go through the--
Those comments are from Ted's team.
I thought--
Is this your only copy?
Conservation, didn't Conservation make some comments about what they wanted to see for signage and things like that? We saw a letter.
I'm sorry, Mike, I don't know--
What did we see tonight?
The letter you printed off, Amy.
There's a letter from Andrews dated November 9th in response to our peer review comments for the Conservation Commission.
Is that the one?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Okay, has Ted seen that?
Yes, we prepared it.
Okay, all right. All right, so, okay.
Which letter are we looking at? Because the one I have in my hand is November 16th.
Yes, that's, that's the letter in response to our comments to the ZBA.
Comments, right, okay, right.
So there's two. One dated November 9th, which was response to Conservation. One dated November 16th, which is responses to comments to the ZBA.
Okay. And Ted has seen this? Okay, all right.
But Bill hadn't seen it until this evening.
Bill hasn't seen it, okay. All right, so let's go through the letter.
All right, so again, Beta had provided a letter back to the ZBA based on our review of revised plans. Our letter was dated November 2nd and this letter from Andrews survey, providing responses to our comments, is dated November 16th. The first comment just recognizes that the revisions to the plans are consistent with discussions that took place in the workshop sessions that the board had. The second comment is regarding pedestrian access throughout the site. Previous comments had made note of some of the difficulties with pedestrians getting through the site, the location of walkways between the units, lack of sidewalks. Those comments we felt were addressed, so we don't think there's any additional action The third comment was regarding a new sidewalk that was added adjacent to the Durant property. There was a note on the plan about a proposed retaining wall or ledge face by others. The response is that a note has been added that all the work performed will be on the land of the applicant. Our concern was simply to make sure there was enough space to put the retaining wall in on the applicant's property.
And there is.
Again, we haven't been able to verify it on the plan. The note's been added to confirm that. I'm going to suspect that it's probably okay.
Judy, I'm just curious, how does that get verified on the plan?
Well, they need an opportunity to review it.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, if we close the public hearing tonight and--
You can't take any further testimony.
Right, I know that, but let's say that you can't verify it or there isn't enough space, what happens if--
It would be imposing a condition of approval that said they have to do the work on their side of the property.
Okay, so we can still go ahead and impose that condition?
I would say so. I mean, all the, they're obligated to do all the work on their own property unless they get some form of permission or easement--
Right.
--onto adjacent property.
Right.
Comment number four on page two. We had noted the revised plans had turned some streetlights at five locations. We requested a detail and also some information about pole height and type of luminaire. The response is that a lighting plan has been added to the plan set. Details regarding light mounting height and type of luminaire have been added. All the lighting has been proposed within the common green space. And electrical connections are shown as well as photometric detail. Again, a quick review of the plan tonight shows that that information is there. I haven't looked at it that closely to verify everything, but the photometrics that they're showing on the plan indicate that there's no spillage onto adjacent property, which was one of the requirements we asked for. So I, again, I would, I would suspect that it's fine. We'd like a little bit more time to review it, but I suspect that it's fine and probably wouldn't have any significant comments on it. And if there are any, perhaps it could be another condition of approval if it's not significant.
Well, the only issue is that if they close the hearing tonight, you know, they can't take conditions from you that have not been vetted in the public hearing. So that's the only issue.
And that's why, again, I'm, you know, I know we kind of, they sent the letter in over a week ago and I'm torn between delaying this yet, if there are some additional things that we want to add as conditions, we won't be able to do that, Judy. That's my concern.
I understand. I do, I understand.
You know, I'm trying to be sympathetic to them, that they did what they were supposed to--
Right.
And we dropped the ball, so to speak, on our end.
Well, something happened, you know, and the fact, whatever it was that happened, it almost doesn't matter at this point, except, you know--
So how do we, you know--
Well, I'd let, I'd let the consultant continue to kind of go through and just sort of tell you where he thinks maybe there needs to be some, a little additional time. Let's just binge this process. This is helpful.
There's only a few more. Comment number five was regarding snow storage areas being coordinated with the landscape plans. The response is that they have been coordinated. The issue previously was that some trees were shown as being proposed in the snow storage areas. So again, a quick look at the plans tonight shows that that looks like it's been addressed. I would say we probably wouldn't have any issue with that. Comment number six, the height of the proposed privacy fence, again, adjacent to the Durant property, was shown as four feet. There had been discussions in the workshop and in other meetings that it should be six feet. I did take a look at that. That has been addressed on the plans. Comment number seven is regarding the site triangle, or site distance for the driveway getting out onto Cleveland Street. That was the discussion that we had, to show the site triangle and verify that it's all contained either within the applicant's property or within the public right-of-way. Again, looking at the plans quickly here tonight, it looks like they have shown that with the correct site distance used. So I think we wouldn't have any additional comment on that issue as well. Comment number eight is just regarding the stormwater, revised stormwater management report that was submitted. Our comment was that it appeared that it accurately reflected the changes to the plan. We did attend the Concom meeting last week, I think, and Concom did close the hearing. So I think they will be issuing an order of conditions for the project.
And to your knowledge, there's nothing in the order, likely to be in the order of conditions that might affect conditions of disperment?
No, I don't think there's be anything in the order of conditions that will affect the design of the project from what the board's seeing. And again, just one previous comment that we had regarding adding some additional labeling to indicate the geometry of the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
That's been added and so we wouldn't have any more comment on that. So I would say of the comments, the one thing we haven't really been able to do is review the revised landscaping plans, although they did address the comment regarding coordination with snow storage areas. We haven't had a chance to review the lighting plan, although a quick look at it indicates that they provided the information that we asked for. We just haven't really been able to verify the details of it. I don't suspect that we would have any significant comment on that.
I think the most important thing would be the lighting, because I think the neighbors have had great concern about that. So I don't think I'd want to, I think if you're concerned at all about the lighting, I would hate to close the public hearing if you do want to really take a look at that, because I think that would be an error. My opinion.
Yeah, I think some of the things you'd want to verify is that there is no light spillage onto adjacent property, what the foot candle levels are with the lights, which would take us a little bit of time to look at the plans. Well, I think more than what we can do tonight.
You have to decide how comfortable you are with proceeding without their sort of final sign-off. It's really going to be a policy call on the board's part, it's--
Yeah, I kind of, I don't want to, you know, it's a couple of weeks. I don't think two weeks is gonna--
Will you have a response, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, good.
Thank you. So understandably, the board's interest is in keeping the public hearing open long enough so that the board can accept testimony from both the applicant and your consultant. And obviously, the applicant's interest is in the board issuing what we hope will be a decision approving the project with reasonable conditions. So it seems to me that we can serve both those interests if we do keep the public hearing for some reasonable amount of time. But I would hope the board would agree that in that interim, that we could begin to draft a decision and I would even volunteer to prepare an initial draft.
I sent it to you.
Pardon?
I sent you a draft.
You did?
Did you not get it?
Boy, there's something wrong with the emails. I honestly did not get it. I honestly did not--
You didn't get our decision? You said it!
Well, why didn't you get it? Everybody just stop, okay? I'm not making decisions for the board, but I had volunteered to draft a starting point. I sent it to you, I sent it to Paul, I sent it to you. You didn't get it?
No.
Okay, there's a problem. Maybe it's Thanksgiving week, is that what the problem is here?
I'll work it up.
I did. So I feel very badly because it was really just sort of an initial set of kind of these would be conditions I would--
We knew that Judy was going to do a draft.
Well, we had discussed very preliminarily the process, yes. We had certainly discussed that. So, okay, but continuing, I think there's a way, again, to serve our mutual interest in that, you know, if you keep the public hearing open for whatever you think is reasonable to allow Beta to, you know, be thorough and respond as necessary, then in that interim, I will somehow get the draft decision and begin to--
I feel very sorry.
As you said, these things happen and at this point, it almost doesn't matter. But presumably, you can send it again and we can--
Yeah.
We're going to go back to carrier pigeons and have them just submit it that way.
Hopefully, you still have it, Judy, you have to recreate it.
Oh, no, I definitely still have it.
And have a meaningful discussion about the decision and perhaps it would be very close to final form at that time. If that makes sense, then we'd be amenable to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's just a few loose ends that we want to give our consultants a chance to cross the Ts and dot the Is. We have started the process of the draft, so I think we're all on the same page. We want to keep the process moving forward.
There are blanks in it, like--
Did you get my waiver list?
Yes, he said the 13th.
Good. At least we know it's going in this--
There are some chunks of blanks in it, like I was leaving space for the dates of the final plans--
You said the 13th by mistake.
Because I wasn't sure you might change.
December 7th.
A day that will live in infamy.
December, now, I can't, just so you know, I can't be here that night, but maybe if you want to go ahead and meet and just trust that we'll work together to get what you need, I don't want to hold them up either. I just, that first week in December, it's booked solid.
Yeah.
Second week--
Just fax a copy to us.
Well, I didn't want to see everybody and start a, yeah, that actually was, I was just trying to get the lawyers on the same page before I caused any confusion, but I thought maybe somebody on staff might want to have a copy. So I'm just really--
Return me seat.
The lawyers are confused.
Return me seat. I just looked, I got nothing.
No, I just sent it. Well, this was like two weeks ago. Because you and I talked after the last meeting about--
Is the 14th an option?
Yeah, 14th is an option.
Did you send it to a different--
Public hearing.
Okay.
Too late.
To before.
You can't do the 17th?
I can't, I've just seen the, I know Judy just said she couldn't--
Everybody can do this, everybody here can do the 17th.
The following week, I'm on the vineyard again all week for the last round of meetings on their housing plans. Now, if I had to be here Wednesday night, I would come. I would just take, I would just work it out.
The 14th?
The 14th, I would, I would just leave the vineyard, come here and go back the next morning.
We're beyond our extension on the 14th, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think the extension--
It was the 13th or the 14th.
Yeah, I think it's the 13th, too. How do you feel about going to the 14th? Is that paying you too much? It's just a question of my, I can't be here at all that first week.
No, we're fine with the 14th if we can, as Rob says, work along, like, if it--
Yeah.
Work along tonight with most of the details.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Because we had spoken--
Yeah, we did.
You lit a fire under me and so I was like, oh, I better get this done and--
It's just a letter. You just send a quick email.
It happens. All right, sorry.
So we can get a little extension and then we'll go on the 14th.
Okay, so December 14th, we'll wrap it up.
Do we have another extension for a day?
Right. Okay, all right, we'll work that out. Okay, so Bill and Glenn, you're going to do what you have to do, or Glenn, you're all done.
I think I pretty much covered what you guys--
Okay, all right. Bill, you just have a--
I actually wouldn't be able to make that--
Okay, you're all set.
They're tired of us.
Bill, you've got a couple of loose ends to tie up. Okay.
Can you take an audience question?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kathy, Cleveland Street. In regards to the lighting plan, I just wanted to ask if it was specific for all lights or just streetlights? I'm thinking about lights on the homes. Are those going to be the similar no spillage type of products? I mean, because it's not just a streetlight is of concern to me personally, because I'm going to be seeing a lot of ones.
Steve?
The lighting plan does not specify wall-mounted building lighting, but we're certainly under every intention and I expect it to be a condition that no light shall leave the property.
Period.
Period. So certainly, we would be required to comply with that.
So I guess it would follow that when it's operating and has HOA would be in the rulebook, if you will, that any fixtures, exterior fixtures would conform to that no spillage type of schema. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, the conditions--
Because if five years--
I think we would just have a condition of approval that says there'll be no light spillage from the property.
Yeah, those conditions are perpetuity.
That those, that condition will determine not only the exterior lighting on the site, but the choice of any lighting fixtures on the exterior of buildings, period. I think that's what you do.
Yep, inspectional services within the town will, you know, verify compliance with all aspects of the building, you know, component of the project and these conditions that are in these permits are, you know, are there for perpetuity, so--
All right, I didn't know, that's why I was asking.
That's fine, sure, it's fair.
Good question. Okay, all right, good. So we got that done. Next on our agenda would be the waiver list.
Right.
All right, now Judy, how do you want to handle this tonight?
Item by item. I think what you might want to do is just sort of, now, when did you, how long have you had this?
10 minutes, 15 minutes.
But does this one, this one incorporates all the changes?
Yes.
Okay. It does incorporate the changes? Okay, you're still showing 40 units.
So, Ray, you haven't had a chance.
Item F7B1 and F7B1A, a total of 40 dwellings. Still showing that. So that's why I'm wondering if it is the correct one. Page five of eight.
Yeah, we do need to correct this, yeah.
That's why I'm wondering if it says the accurate one.
That should be changed, obviously. Yeah. That should be changed to 32.
Would it be helpful to the board and everybody concerned, if Ray and I go through these, communicate to the applicant whether they think, we think anything else like that maybe needs to be corrected? We could do that administratively and we could provide a memo to the board prior to the next meeting with recommendations on these waivers.
Go ahead.
Would that be helpful? Are you all right with that?
Yeah, that's fine. More than fine. Yep, good idea.
Why don't, is that all right with you guys? Kind of go through this carefully and if we see anything else that we think maybe needs to be changed, we could just contact you.
I think what happened is we had sent you a sort of an internal version just moments ago, but what was sent to you, Judy, should say 32, but nonetheless--
Yeah, and then, well, I got in my hands right now--
That's not what you have.
You may be right. You may be right.
Do you have that?
It's just not going to help them.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I know what you mean, but I'm looking now. I'm just trying to figure out what the heck.
Would it be helpful, it would be helpful to me anyway, if Rob would send us a version?
Yeah.
Maybe tomorrow.
Sure, why don't we just do that? If you can just send--
Move forward with that one.
Yeah. It's somewhere here in my pile of stuff.
Well, I'm just thinking, as long as we all have the same one and we're both working on the same document.
Okay.
Starting tomorrow. Which would be good.
I think that's a better way to go. Otherwise, you're going to have to go through here line by line and have to turn to you guys and you're probably going to say most of these, yeah, they're sort of square with the plan, but, oh, we haven't had a chance to review something yet. And I just think there's a more expedient way to do this. I mean, my, I can tell you what my standard is always, is have you asked for the kitchen sink and you don't need it? I've seen some waiver lists that are just sort of like, everything gets thrown in because people haven't really taken the time, I'm not saying you did this, but that people haven't really taken the time to review the local rules and regs, so they just kind of ask basically for big plan waivers and hope to God somebody's going to say yes. So part of it is, did they ask for more than they need? And part of it is, is there something here that seems to be, you know, grossly missing? Now, it's not the board's responsibility to tell the applicant you forgot to ask something, but I think we should just sort of know whether this is really a complete risk.
This is where you come in and--
Yeah.
--the big bucks.
I'm told I have the lowest rate of anybody on the MHP list.
Oh, okay.
But why don't we do that?
Okay, I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay, just to help you.
Thank you.
There's somebody new in the audience who has a question.
Hi, Peggy. Does the public get to see what the waiver list looks like?
Be put on the website.
It is on the--
It can be.
Current one will be on tomorrow?
It will be on the--
Thank you. Tomorrow? Or do we want to wait till you guys go through?
Well, if they want to see it--
If it's still public hearing--
I can give her a copy. You can have this copy. That helps.
Thank you. That's the old one, though.
It's a change from 40 to 32. Sure, getting parking spaces.
Thank you.
It'll probably still change slightly after you guys finish reviewing it.
It might.
Right, right. Slightly, no, I understand. Right, right. Point of reference.
We might make--
It's a place to start. Oh, yeah, I agree.
I doubt it, but whatever. So Ray, Ray, I can collaborate on that, I think, and get that done in advance.
So that'll be done before the 13th?
Yes, 14th, before the 14th.
Excuse me, 14th?
Yeah.
14th. Okay. All right, so Bill's got his to do, you've got your to do.
Yeah.
And what else do we have, Chris? Anything else?
That is it. Poor Judy drove all this way for this.
I think--
Pardon me?
You drove all this way for this, right?
Oh, it's all right, that's fine.
But this was important...
Is there anything else you wanted to bring up with the board tonight, or...
Yeah, she's going to.
I just want to mention that we did incorporate into the landscaping plans the...
We did incorporate into the plans the landscaping, the changes that CONCOM required, which were specifically labeling on railings to prevent snow getting pushed into wetlands areas. We marked and labeled specific trees and tagged them out on the front lawn, and then we also, there's one other change, I can't just think about that. Oh, we also have the bus shelter, if that wants to be discussed here tonight.
Yes, I remember seeing that, yeah. Actually, that would be great if we could put that to bed.
Oh, yes, and, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we also added some additional landscaping to the small retention pond on the front lawn that John Whittleton had specifically requested. So that's on the new plans, the landscape.
Thank you.
Did you want to show, did you want to look at the plan for the...
Mike and I are going to go to Hawaii and review it personally to make sure that it meets our criteria, because we know there is one there.
It looks like, the landscaping looks like it was in Hawaii?
No, the hot, the hot.
If you pull back down any, that's the correct sheet there, that shows the landscape. And these are changes that CONCOM specifically requested.
I see.
The entrance pond.
Got a pointer?
Yeah. It goes towards the entrance.
No, I know, it is tar scooting around in PDF.
There you go. So you'll see that we specifically labeled existing trees in the portion of the site that will remain, primarily pines, large pine, but there's an oak, and a maple, and some oaks, and then, of course, there are some very small sapling black walnuts that, you know, that kind of fall in between. But in addition, there was some additional plantings around the bend here. CONCOM really emphasized they did not want to see that basin from the street. And the fact that it's in the ground, it'll be very unlikely it'll be seen as well, but the landscaping, you know, adds to that assurance that they needed. So they did, they did, you know, see this plan.
Actually...
The only, the only exception, well, the exception was that, you know, some of the extra, it was a kind of a condition, so to speak, that they, that they wanted that around the corner.
I presume this is a fenced basin? Does the fence show up on any of the plans?
I was concerned about that.
There's no fence.
Oh, there's not?
No, no, no fence, everything.
Is it about safety concerns?
Okay, I, typically, they're required to, but if it doesn't have to, great, because they always look awful when they're fenced.
I agree, yeah, it's a dry basin, it's got a low, you know, low-flow drain. It's required to drain within 72 hours, and soil conditions and the low-flow outlet will ensure that it's less than 72.
Okay, so maybe then, one of the conditions is that, in fact, it's, if it was being told it's not a fenced basin, that it doesn't get fenced.
Okay.
As long as Beta doesn't have a concern from a safety standpoint.
That's what I...
Condition, that it doesn't make a fence?
No. Right, there wouldn't be a fence.
Why would that be a condition, that it doesn't need a fence?
Because it may, because one is required when you have a retention pond, so it would be a condition that you would not need one.
Who requires it? The planning board's rules and regs? Is that where it's required, where is it required?
I didn't say, I didn't say.
Oh, okay.
I said, if it was.
If it's, if it's not, then it wouldn't do it, because we haven't conditioned that with other projects...
Right.
That have retention ponds.
The only condition necessary would be if the HOA decided to put one in in two years.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Something after the fact. They usually want to remove them, too, yeah. And then the bus shelter, which is, while we're here, is that rectangle there between the trees and, I believe you have a digital copy, Amy, but we have some printed copies. I did pass some out to the Butters.
There you go.
I'm sure if it comes up here.
So I did get that forwarded earlier today and took a look at it, and only two comments. I think in general, it's fine. I think for this particular location, that stone base feels a little out of place. I think simpler is better in this case. If they were just columns that went to the ground, and judging by the character of the town and of these houses, I would think that it's going to be something that looks like painted woodwork, so maybe like white structure as opposed to, this looks a little bit like a southwestern National Parks structure. Bill's expression, but I think you hit it right on. But the idea that it's open columns and the simple roof on it, I think that's all great. Just make it look a little more New Englandy.
Yeah, I think that was our intent. I think we found something that looked fairly close to what we were trying to, you know, project. So wood-framed, shingle roof...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And columns straight to the ground.
Yeah.
But I think it was the open-air aspect about this that we discussed in the last...
Definitely.
No, I understood, no, I get it.
Is a question?
In regards to the structure as well as, I think, the fence, because it might be on the side, same side of the property, my preference would not be white, because it would stand out more. It would be better, I think, and I don't know if others agree, to have it more blend in with the natural surroundings. So I don't disagree with the straight columns to the ground, but the brown would be preferred.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I don't think we need to take up this evening.
That's it. That's it.
Could they just, could they just highlight the lighting plan just for a moment? It's the next sheet or the sheet before this?
What's that, Joe?
Could they just point out on the lighting plan, the lighting plan's here tonight, right?
Right.
Could they just at least give us an overview of it?
Well, Bill has to review it first.
Right, but just for us to see it from their perspective in terms of a quick presentation of, they said, I saw there was five locations, or how many locations are there actually lights? I know we're not talking about the buildings' lights. We're talking about the lights that are just structures, no poles, right?
You mean lights on buildings?
No, not the lights on buildings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The lights, that's all, right there. So I was going to say, Steve, if you can just point out, you know, the poles.
Oh, I'm sorry, I completely misunderstood what you were saying.
The poles are indicated by, you know, these lighting contours, so those show the photometric extent, so...
All right, that's why I couldn't...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Oh, seven of them?
Yep, and then these are bollard lights that illuminate the walkway.
Yeah.
So as you can see there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. 13 bollard lights.
And seven of the...
Seven of the pole-mounted lights.
Yeah, the reason I asked was because we talked earlier with the letter that Beta has to look at.
Yep.
It said something about five lights. I didn't understand that comment, that's why I was asking.
I think that we didn't have the lighting plan at the time.
All right, so it was just...
And that was just our best guess, trying to count what we saw in the...
And that was the reason I asked to put it up, because I was trying to correlate the five I saw in your letter with, I couldn't count them right here, so, thank you, Steve, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think what, when we saw how little light that five lights were going to provide, we added a couple in some key locations, parking, corners, you know, changes in geometric roadway conditions, intersections, parking mail.
No, that's good, because that was my concern. So I was looking at the lighting plans, and I was saying, I was thinking five from his letter, and then I was saying, oh, it didn't seem like five would do the trick.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we need to request an extension by one day.
For the, for purposes of the closing of the hearing, right?
For the closing of the hearing?
Yes.
And...
So, I mean, I think you just need to put in the record, for the record, that you'll grant the extension through that date, and we just need a letter then to give to the town clerk, you know the drill, so...
Okay. Rob's going to get a letter into, Rob, can you get a letter in?
Sure.
That would be great.
If it's done there for a day, that would be helpful. And...
Yes, if you send that to Amy, that will be great, and then you just make sure the town clerk has it on record, and that will be fine. Yeah, yeah.
So at the next meeting, we'll cover waivers.
Yes. We'll go through the waiver list, we'll have a memo for you in advance.
Advance, and Bill will review his comments, and then we'll be done.
I think so.
And you're also going to have a draft?
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah, that's like...
Draft decision.
Yeah. You think? Right.
Now...
Yes, yes, I do.
A lot of the conditions are fairly standard, but...
Do you expect that we'll be able to begin our deliberations that evening?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, okay, yes, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because my assumption was that you would look at the draft and rip it apart.
And I will.
And Paul will look at that and rip it apart, and although I think he'll tell you why I write pretty good decisions, but, you know, and that you would look at it and tell him, just tell me what we're missing or whatever, and basically try to come up with a draft that's pretty complete.
Okay.
So, you know, if you want things added to it, that's, that's fine, but I'd like to give you something that's kind of complete.
Good, all right.
Did you get your question answered, by the way, about the subsidized housing inventory? I was asked about that.
Yes, you sent it to us.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody had it.
That's an incomplete list, what you sent.
That's what they have on file.
What they have, it's incomplete.
Okay, but, but let me just tell you what happens. If somebody wants to file a comprehensive permit application here, they're going by DHCD's list, so if you think it's incorrect, you need to get ahold of Margot Leclair and give her whatever documentation she needs to get that list current.
We'll get it straightened out.
Because legally, that's the list.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for Lakeland Farms to December 14th at 7:30 PM on December 14th.
Do we, do you want to meet at 7? Is that possible?
Why not? Judy?
I'm just going to come back from the vineyard, so I could be here at 7. I mean, that's fine.
You're coming all the way back from the vineyard?
For this, yeah, and then I'll go back the next morning.
7 o'clock, work.
Who doesn't?
Give yourself enough traveling time.